Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call to order this Tuesday, July 25th, 2023, meeting of the Pierce County Council in Tuesday's study session. The time is 12:05 PM. All members are present except for Vice Chair Campbell, who is excused. I'm going to ask the indulgence of the county council for us to move to other business to respect the time of our our guests. If we could move to other business and our briefing on the King County Regional Drug Court, is there any objection to moving to that item? Thank you. Seeing none, I'd like to welcome Judge Lineberry, who I will call on to introduce our guest, Judge Lineberry. Thank you for accepting our invitation to come to Tuesday's study session. We, you are most recently the presiding judge in District Court and now leading the therapeutic courts for our District Court. And we've begun discussions about what regional drug court could look like, especially in light of the new, the new laws in Washington State related to drug possession and how to further incent people to make better choices in their life and improve public safety. So thank you for accepting our invitation and this opportunity to learn from other municipalities who are regionalizing this work and figuring out how to provide this sense of justice to more folks. So let me turn it over to you to for your opening remarks and to begin the presentation.
All right. Thank you. So just to give a little bit more background, Councilmember Mello, you're right. I took over the therapeutic court program in January. And back then I was interested in learning how we could grow our programs and increase the number of participants. So not just in, well, we know drug court was kind of non-existent due to the Blake decision, but our mental health court and our veterans treatment court. And so when I took over, I viewed a lot of various courts throughout the state. I watched their various therapeutic court programs, their staffings, also had the opportunity to talk about their structure. King County District Court being one of them. They were gracious enough to meet with us before court. We watched their staffing, we watched their court process, and then afterwards had a discussion about the regional court concept. And I know some of our municipalities had reached out to us, specifically five municipal courts and university plays, asking how they can refer some of their defendants to our therapeutic court programs. They didn't have the funding and it doesn't make sense for the smaller municipalities to create a therapeutic court program if they don't have the numbers to support it. So they were wondering how we could support them. So that's why I turned to King County District Court because they have a very robust program for mental health court, Veterans Treatment Court. Both of those are regional type courts and they also have a community court. Then we had that countywide meeting that was called by the executive with the various mayors there, and I think Madam Prosecutor was there as well. And there was also some interest about how do you refer cases to Pierce County District Court for the therapeutic courts? And there's some legalities involved with that, but there was some brief conversation during that meeting as well. And then Mr. Bridges reached out to me the following week, asking me about that model. And I told him, King County has that model down. And so I forwarded on some contact information. And so that's how we are here today. And so from King County District Court, we have Judge Peglisati. She was appointed to the King County District Court bench in 2016. And she has presided over all their therapeutic courts to include their regional mental health court, their regional veterans court and community court. And then we have Kate, Trey Montana, which I believe you're the interim program coordinator. Is that correct, Kate?
Good afternoon. I'm the interim therapeutic courts manager overseeing all of the therapeutic courts with King County District Court at this time.
So I thank you both for taking your time. I know how your time is really valuable and there's not much of it during the court day. So I appreciate that. What I reviewed with them, and this is what I think you guys want to know is what is the organization of a regional court? How is it formed? How is it funded? Lessons learned? And then maybe open it up for questions and answers. Is that accurate? Okay. All right. So Kate?
Sure. Thank you so much for having us. I did just want to clarify, we don't have a drug court as a part of King County District Court. Drug court in King County, at least right now, is a part of Superior Court. So I just wanted to make that little clarification and distinction that the programs that we serve right now in District Court are our mental health court, our veterans court, and then our community court, as Judge Lineberry said. So we formed our mental health court in 1999. We've been going strong in that program since that time. Our veterans court started in 2012. And our community courts are more recent, the first one starting in 2018. And now we have three of them, the most recent one starting in 2021. And so for mental health and veterans court, I've been with King County District Court for a little over eight years. And since that time, we've been a completely regional program, accepting not just cases from King County District Court mainstream courtrooms, but also accepting felony referrals and then municipal court referrals into our mental health and veterans treatment court programs. The way that process works is if it's a felony case or a municipal court case specifically, the prosecutor in that jurisdiction is the only person who can refer the case over to us since their jurisdiction would change. And so it gets referred over to our prosecutor's office. With King County District Court, their therapeutic alternatives unit reviews the cases to see if it's an appropriate referral and then forwards that on to our court clinicians for the actual screening process. For our court clinicians, we actually contract through King County Public Health to provide that service. They have social workers that work with within their body of work that do this work for us. And then they verify the eligibility, the diagnostic eligibility for our programs, the amenable to all of the, you know, court conditions and then that there's appropriate resources in the community to meet the client's needs. So that's kind of the very, I guess, basic information, so to say, about our program. We, our programs in King County, our therapeutic court programs are funded through the mid, the mental illness and drug dependency budget. So specifically, the mid provides the funding for the prosecutor's office directly to the prosecutors for the therapeutic alternatives unit. And so how the prosecutor's office, you know, receives the referrals from the municipal courts and through felony, the felony court through Superior Court kind of goes through that. We don't have any specific MOUs in place. And so the referrals strictly go through from prosecutor to prosecutor since the jurisdiction would change. Once a case does opt into mental health or veterans court through our program, the part or all of the case from either the city municipal court or Superior Court is dismissed so that the misdemeanor charges can proceed with us. Judge Paglisati, would you like to add anything?
Yeah. And thank you all for having us. It's our pleasure to be here and happy to answer any questions. When we did start the mental health court during that time, I was a defense counsel, so I'm familiar with that perspective. When it started, the program did not regional then, and it did not take in any felony matters. And now Kate has more of our statistics, but I think between 70 and 75% of our regional mental health court and regional veteran court are felony, what we call felony dropdowns. And so we're dealing with some fairly significant cases. We have very intense supervision program. We have specialized probation mental health specialists as opposed to our mainstream probation officers. So an intense supervision as well as housing connections to treatment and regular court hearings. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And our community court is very different. That's not, we don't take felony cases in community court. That's a completely different focus. So what we'll primarily be focusing on today is the mental health court and regional veterans court. So happy to take any questions.
Well, Judge, and Kate, thank you. As Judge Lineberry said, your time is incredibly valuable. Thank you for being with us to give us a sense of how you're running your therapeutic court programs. Let me, I certainly have a series of questions, but let me turn to my colleagues first and see what questions other members have. That's for Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. I keyed in on something that was said around somebody's making sure that there are services provided. Kate, Kate or said that. And that's one of the things I really worry with our regional looking, looking beyond where our courts currently are housed in our geography. So in your communities where these people are residing that are farther away from the metro central areas in King County, how do you make sure there's services available? Especially for the mental health aspect, or I guess if drug is off the table, but mental health, we'll leave it at that.
And so the way, we don't have any one specific agency outside of, of course, veterans court, you know, I would, you know, 99.9% of those participants, you know, get their treatment through the VA. But for our mental health side, our participants are free to receive their treatment wherever they'd like. That works with their insurance. We don't have any one particular agency that we work with. The majority of our participants do have Medicaid, but as a part of the screening process, the court clinicians that we work with, that we contract with through the public health department, those social workers, they're making sure that wherever the person does reside and court-approved housing for us is clean and sober and weapon-free housing. So if someone already has that, they don't have to move, but if not, then we will try to find them housing to the best of our ability in the community if we can. And so they're free to go to whatever treatment provider they would like to go to that will work with their insurance and that they're comfortable with, so long as they're engaging in the treatment that's recommended based on what their treatment providers are saying, whether that's mental health or substance use, and then taking all medications as prescribed.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
If I could just interject for a moment, we're very fortunate to be working with Pierce County Alliance. And they do provide a lot of the transportation for some of our participants who do live in outline areas. So I think they get their funding through the behavioral tax as well, but they do provide transportation.
And with respect to, I'll just throw in, with respect to our court hearings, we conduct court down in the South King County one day a week. So we come to our participants in a sense, so they're not having to travel to metropolitan Seattle. We also pre-pandemic held court out on the east side in Isiqua once a month. Post pandemic, we have our hearings by Zoom or in person unless I specifically order that someone be in person, but we do have two courthouses that we do travel to, to hold court for those that have to appear in person.
Thank you. Kate or Judge Paglisati, what do you anticipate happening with the new drug possession law as it relates to cases coming into District Court?
I can note, right now with respect to cases in the Seattle area, Seattle Municipal Court, which is separate and aside from us, will likely be dealing with the majority of the cases in Seattle. King County District Court also, we contract with a number of municipalities to hold court there. Those municipalities have, some have adopted the new statute. And so we're waiting to see how many of those are actually filed. I'm not sure what the King County Prosecutor's Office plans to do with respect to drug cases themselves, but some of the municipalities will figure that out. So we don't don't have a solid answer for you yet. We don't have a drug court in place at this time. I don't know that we will as far as King County District Court goes. And I'm not sure what alternative type of therapeutic programs may be in place for some of the municipalities. And I'm not sure if that answers your question. That was a long way to say not sure.
I can say for our, at least the mental health court program, if someone has a co-occurring disorder, you know, severe persistent mental illness, if they also have a substance abuse disorder that would in theory qualify them for a referral to our program. So we do handle co-occurring disorders in our program. And so if we see someone with both diagnoses, it's possible we might see an uptick on our end in mental health court or veterans court. For our veterans court program, our criteria for diagnosis any behavioral health diagnosis, whether that's substance use or mental health that is treatable at the VA would qualify. And so it's possible we might see some, some more of those types of charges coming into our current programs. But until they're actually filed on, I don't know that we'll know what the numbers actually look like.
And there are, I will throw out there, there have been some very informal and some formalized diversion programs through the King County Prosecutor's Office, cases that we don't ever see in court that have been in place for years. The one that I do see in place in court, we have what we call an expedited felony calendar. That's not a therapeutic court, but that happens to be a calendar that I preside over one day a week. And these are felony offenses where the prosecuting attorney is willing to offer a misdemeanor in exchange for a plea. Or if someone wants a trial, then it gets dismissed out of District Court and goes back to Superior Court. About three years ago, give or take a little bit, King County Prosecutor implemented what they call the TAD program, the therapeutic alternative diversion program for that particular calendar. So public health clinicians come to that calendar. And if the prosecutor deems the case eligible, they'll connect the individual with the public health representative. And if that individual follows through with the agreement to either, usually it's setting up an evaluation, starting treatment, or connecting with the service provider, the prosecutor will dismiss that felony case. So that's one program they have in place. And those are felony cases, usually property crimes, and there's a limit on restitution, et cetera. So I'm not sure what they're going to do with misdemeanor drug possessions.
With the, turning to Judge Lineberry as well, with the new drug possession law, don't we all have a major incentive to offer diversion?
Well, I think the legislature has pretty much mandated that and they're encouraging it even, even pre-filing or post-filing. So.
So are we set up for that? What's the, what's the system going to look like?
Well, I know the prosecutor's offices had diversionary programs pre-filing in the past. I don't know if I remember like a friendship program. I don't know if they're going to look into other diversionary programs pre-filing. But post-filing, it would be something similar to what we had before. If they get those misdemeanor charges referred to them and they choose to file them, you know, we do have a drug court program. It's going to have to be altered just because of the way the, they laid out the statutes. Can't be the same as it was in the past because the majority of those were felony dropdowns with more jurisdiction and, but so they've kind of restricted, tied our hands a little bit about what that program will look like. But that, that's an option.
And so under, back to our friends in King County District Court, you, you shared about you don't have a drug court now, but you have mental health court, community court and veterans court, and you get referrals now from other courts of limited jurisdiction in King County. You don't, did we hear you properly? You don't have a memorandum of understanding or a financial agreement with communities that are referring the cases who they themselves don't have these kinds of therapeutic courts and they're referring it to your court because you have the wraparound services and everything it takes to create a therapeutic court environment. But you're not worried about exchanging money per se because all of these services, the prosecutors, the wraparound services, all of it is paid for by a countywide mental health tax. Is that why you're not worried about an MOU and money?
We don't, we don't, yeah, I guess I'll also defer to Judge Paglisati. We don't have an MOU specifically because we, the the charges are able to be transferred essentially from the municipality to the other, but if the prosecutor's office is willing. And so the way the referral specifically works is that the municipal court prosecutor would have to be willing to transfer the case because essentially the case would be dismissed on their end and then refiled in King County District Court to be prosecuted by our prosecutor's office. And so our program as a whole in King County District Court is funded through our mental illness and drug dependency program. But no, we don't exchange any monies or anything with, with the cities that choose to make a referral over to us. And I'll, I'll let Judge Paglisati add on to that as well.
No, that, that's, Kate is absolutely correct. So the case is refiled. So it's not, it's a transfer in the sense of this municipality is saying, we want this case into the regional veterans court or the regional mental health court, but they dismiss their case. Our prosecutor refiles it. The municipality actually dismisses their case after someone opts in. So it's an agreement between prosecutors and then our program is funded through the mental health drug dependency tax. And our community courts, I will say, are, the community courts are separate. Those, those cases are most of our municipalities that we have, we have interlocal agreements with and we're supervising their cases. For instance, City of Shoreline, all their cases are heard through King County District Court, but it's a City of Shoreline prosecutor. City of Redmond, it is a King County District Court presides over those cases, but it's a City of Redmond prosecutor. City of Auburn, King County District Court, interlocal agreement. Those are all of our, our community courts right now. So that's a little bit different, but we take all City of Auburn cases, right? And all of City of Shoreline cases, all of City of Redmond, all of City of Bellevue. That's a little bit different than our regional veterans court or mental health court, where King County prosecutor files the cases. And I hope that answers your question.
I think it does. Thank you. Yeah. Are there any other questions for our guests from King County District Court? Well, Judge Lineberry, well, first of all, thank you to our King County District Court friends. Thank you for carving out time for us to learn a little bit about how you're regionalizing these services. Judge Lineberry, I'll turn it back to you for any closing comments and thoughts about any potential next steps you might have as we try to work together on regionalizing these resources.
Well, first of all, I just want to thank you both, Judge and Kate. If you need to leave, I know how you might have a busy calendar this afternoon. I don't want to keep you any further, but I appreciate your time. Thank you both.
Thank you for having us. Any follow-up questions, feel free to reach out.
Great.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
They've been really helpful. And you know, I turn to all our surrounding counties to observe what they're doing. Thurston County, Kitsap, King County, just our neighbors, just to get ideas and see how we can grow these programs. I don't know if you have any questions for me. I can answer any. I really don't have anything much to add.
I guess I'm still struggling with trying to understand how with the new drug possession law, how we're ready to accept those defendants and help put them on a path that gets them out of their cycle of dependency of a substance and make sure that we are going to surround them with the resources that's going to limit their ability and likelihood to reoffend.
I think there's just so many things at play that it's really hard to have this glass ball and like read into the future as to what's going to happen. Is law enforcement going to make the arrests? Are they going to make the referrals to the prosecutor's office? Are they going to do a pre, a pre-filing diversion program instead of filing? I mean, there's just so many different factors at play right now and it's so new. You know, all I can say is, you know, I think we can respond if we do start seeing those cases being filed in District Court. I think the legislature is saying they want to divert those into a therapeutic type program. We've had a drug court program in place in the past. We can get that up and going again. And like I said before, it's going to take a little bit of tweaking because of the timeframes, but it depends on all those things. And it depends on the participant, right? Depends on the defendant. Am I just going to take the time? I think a first offense is there or second offense or first offense, 120 days. They just might want to take the 120 days in custody instead of having to call a UA line daily and having random UAs or going through treatment. So all of those things come into play. You know, it's an opt-in program. We can't force them into these programs. So if they choose, so even if the filings are there, they may choose not to participate. So there's just so many different things at play that it's really hard to predict what's going to happen. I can say we can respond to it pretty quickly, but I don't know if that answered your question. I probably did not.
I'm not quite yet satisfied and clear about how we're moving forward. So I'm going to keep pushing us because I don't think we have clarity of focus, to be honest. Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, Judge Lineberry, for coming here and presenting. We're always looking at ways to divert out of the system so they don't get on this constant cycle. But as far as the public defenders that represent these individuals coming, do they have to walk through the whole process with their clients from beginning to end? Do they need to go to the courts? Do they need to be involved in, in what the recommendations are for therapy and other things? How does that piece work?
You know, and I, coming into this in January, I was thinking about, you know, how do, how do we grow these programs? And one of the things that I thought is, you know, got to constantly educate our, our private bar, our public defenders, our prosecutors on what these programs can do and what it entails. You know, in District Court, we get a lot of these young attorneys right out of law school and it's a high turnover. And so I think maybe that's one thing that our court could do better is to continue to educate them, hold little trainings on what it takes to get into mental health court, the benefits of it, the various phases. And so they will talk to their clients. So we don't really control that as the courts. It's, you know, it's the prosecutor and it's the public defender, private attorney that's negotiating these cases. And so I don't know if you know, all of the public defender attorneys or private attorneys are pushing these therapeutic court programs or not. You know, all we can do is educate them to the benefits of it. And, and I think our court could probably do better at that because there is a high turnover with these young attorneys at the District Court level.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. That's an important observation. Councilmember Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. One of the things we heard earlier is the idea that housing is one of the aspects that they really focus on and specifically sober and safe. So weapon-free and drug-free housing. And I think in thinking about how we support our court system, really understanding what is our inventory, what can they, what can they access, what's set aside for this population? Where is it located? And, and I'm not even going to pretend that we have enough, so I won't even say that. So assuming we need more, yes. And, and but what the real need is, do we need safe and sober housing for youth? You know, the 18-year-old or 17-year-old who's lost, like, and I don't know. My assumption is yes, but I don't know if we have that demographic entering our court systems as we move forward and that's going to be a need. And so just kind of thinking about, again, our courts do great stuff here, but part of it is the work that the individual has to do outside the courtroom. And I want to make sure that we don't expend a lot of time, energy and funding on what's going in the courtroom, knowing that they're going to go out and chase services. So I need to know that we have enough. So when you say like Pierce County Alliance is doing great word, work, if I double the number of people, are they ready for that? Or if I add all of East Pierce County and they're doing transportation all the time, are they ready? So I think that's one of the pieces that I really want to, you know, before we really open up the scope, making sure that we've kind of made sure that those things are in place because anytime we make something complicated for somebody, especially somebody who's struggling, it, it's, it's an excuse to not follow through, right? And so I want to make sure that they don't have to work exceptionally hard to find the services that, that we are ready to go. Here are the services that are available. What, what will work best for you? And make sure that we can check all the boxes that are required by whatever, whatever the court set up.
Right, right. That makes sense. You know, and I forgot to ask them, and I know the, the King County folk had given me a statistics on how many of their participants are actually from municipalities, pretty small number. I would venture to say that would probably be the case here. It's not going to explode. It's not going to double. It's just, you know, a case here and there. But the one thing that, the way our therapeutic courts are set up is that we have a social service specialist that's within our probation department. And she not only services our therapeutic courts, but all of our courts. So if someone is in need, here's an example. I handle the competency evaluations. We call it the 1077 calendar. That's the RSW. And so a lot of these cases, maybe they're not found competent or can't be restored and they end up getting dismissed. But we refer them for an evaluation to make sure that they are not a danger to themselves or to others. But we also send our social service specialist over there, even though we've dismissed the case, to make sure that they're interviewing this person and connecting them with whatever services they need, similar to what the jail transition services do. But we, we bring our person from the probation department over there to make sure that they can connect them to services. Or we have someone in the courtroom who pleads guilty to something. There's some immediate needs that are identified. We will also, the courtroom will contact our social service specialist. They'll meet with that person right then and there, connect them to whatever services. And she's an expert on what, and she might be somebody you might want to talk to because she's the expert on where the holes are and the services that we can provide. But in our therapeutic court setting, we also have a peer specialist who is in court for all our hearings and afterwards will connect with the person and sometimes walk them directly over, whether it's across the street to the resource center to, you know, apply for whatever it is they need or take them back to Pierce County Alliance and connect them there. They also provide the transportation. So we have all these various levels of people trying to connect them. And then we have our probation department that does, probation officer that does the same. So it's a lot of eyes on one participant and making sure that they're, they're getting what they need. It's our probation department that provides, you know, what are the need? They do a needs assessment and risk assessment and figures out, you know, what their immediate needs are, not necessarily all the way down the line, but their immediate needs to get them on the right track. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I just had a question pertaining to, do you, are repeat offenders allowed to come back into the court system in the therapeutic courts and go through another? No.
Right. I see what you're saying. So someone that has been in the program but may have gotten terminated and then they reoffend and maybe want to try again. I could see circumstances where that might be okay, but I don't control that. So it's up to the screening process. And so at their screenings, you'll have the prosecutor, public defender, the person doing the evaluation to determine if they qualify for that particular therapeutic program or not. And so ultimately it's up to, you know, negotiations and whether the participant wants to opt back in. So.
Yeah, and I think you, you touched on something that's real important is in the state of mind of some of these individuals, what's the easiest route to go? Sitting in a jail cell, getting all your needs met, or having to do what is tough, what is difficult?
They really have to be a point in their life where they are ready to make that change and want to make that change because it's, it's, it's a lot of work on their part. I mean, they have all these people that are supporting them and helping them get through this process. But ultimately it's up to them to do the hard work. And so you're right. It just, I mean, we have a lot of success stories, but we have some failures as well. And they're just not ready yet. And maybe down the line they will be and.
Right. And I, you know, to kind of piggyback on Councilmember Hitchens' comment pertaining to the juvenile system. I know when TJ comes and talks to us, I mean, he's got the data, data that says a very high percentage of the juveniles that enter that have got criminal history in their immediate family or within, you know, their uncles or whatever. And to release them, put them back into that environment again is just, you're on this potential wheel that keeps spinning. And next thing you know, they're an adult and they're in the system. And so it's kind of, how do you, you know, how do you create an environment where they feel safe and that people are respecting them and they can make progress to set themselves up at success instead of at the age of 24 with a badge of honor saying, I've been in the slammer two years, you know? So anyway, yeah, it's tough, tough, tough.
Well, and it's also looking at screenings too. Do you broaden it? I mean, I don't know. I, you know, I just got back, they have this, the National Association of Drug Court Professionals every year has a conference and there's about 7,000 participants across the United States that attend this conference. And it's interesting, sometimes they broaden and allow people that you normally wouldn't think that should enter into these programs. Maybe they have a violent offense on their history. They, they are now collecting data and realizing that these offenders could benefit from therapeutic court when before, prior to that, they were excluded because of their history. So, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of different things to look at. There's so many factors and variables that are taken into account and.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Judge Langbury, one of the things we just heard from King County District Court is they offer the mental health community and Veterans Court resources to, I think we heard, many, if not all of the various jurisdictions in King County. To, what's it, what's it like here? Look, if Lakewood doesn't, I don't, I'm not up on Lakewood's, if they have a therapeutic court program.
They do. They have Veterans Treatment Court. Yeah, they.
Or DuPont, or I mean, you know, like Eatonville, like you name it, any of the jurisdictions. If, you know, they, they can't afford to have all the services that it takes to stand up a therapeutic court.
I guess I'll use Veterans Treatment Court as an example. You know, you know, Lakewood implemented theirs way before Pierce County District Court did. And I was, you know, when I came on the bench in 2015, 16 as well, 15, 2015, I don't even remember. And we didn't have a Veterans Treatment Court. And I thought that was the oddest thing because we have JBLM in our backyard and, and, and we're the biggest county. And I'm looking at all these counties across the state that have Veterans Treatment Court and we didn't. And so what I like about having more participants and allowing municipalities to utilize our therapeutic courts is that veterans strive, they thrive off of being together in court. And they, they hear each other, they talk afterwards, that there's that camaraderie, there's that common history that they've had together. And there's just something about that that really helps them get through the process. They hear each other's court cases and what's going on. They provide support to one another. If someone maybe came in and is non-compliant, they'll talk to them afterwards. And it's just kind of this group effort. And so when I talked to King County District Court about their Veterans Court, they said it was very unfortunate and hearing from their VJO, which is a Veterans Justice Outreach Coordinator that they get through the BA, she was saying it's very unfortunate that Seattle Municipal Court doesn't just combine theirs with ours because they don't have the numbers as much as they do. But to combine them and have them all together is very beneficial. And that's not to say that's the same with Mental Health Court, but definitely Veterans Treatment Court. And so, yeah, I would welcome having municipalities utilize ours because they're not, it's not a good use of resources for these smaller municipalities when they have maybe one or two a year that could benefit from a program to create an entire program for their court. I think Lakewood would probably hold on to theirs. I'm not sure what their numbers are, but they're pretty decent and they're close enough to JBLM. I don't see them wanting to look to us for services. They established theirs before ours.
But do, but any number of communities, veterans live everywhere.
Right, yeah. So.
So is that an opportunity for collaboration with cities and towns?
I think so, but every jurisdiction has done it differently. You know, you hear from King County, they say with some cities, they have an interlocal agreement, but that's because they provided all their criminal services, all their court services to King County District Court. But then some of them are more informal and it's just from city prosecutor, city prosecutor. Same with Thurston County. They have a interlocal agreement with Yelm. And so it's a more formal agreement. But then their agreement with Olympia Municipal Court is just from city prosecutor to county prosecutor. So I mean, everyone does it a little differently.
Thank you for those insights. I know through my many conversations with Prosecutor Rob Net, we didn't ask her to present today, but she is in chambers listening. I know from my many conversations with her, she's very seriously interested in how, how to do justice fairly and better. And we'd have great conversations about how to do these sorts of things in, in the most thoughtful way. So thank you Prosecutor Rob Net. I know you're, you were, you're here to learn along with us and figure out how we do best by everyone in the county. So thank you for your, your time and your serious interest. Judge Langbury, I don't see any other hands right now. We will certainly continue this discussion with the court, with the prosecutor's office. I think we all have the same end goal here. So I think continuing these dialogues about how we provide you the resources and the ability to support this kind of collaboration going forward is, is what this council is interested in. So we'll, we'll be in further, further talk about how we can help.
Thank you.
Thank you for being with us.
Have a good day.
Thank you, Council, for going out of order this afternoon. Let's come back to item number two, review of today's council meeting agenda. I'll turn to Ms. Long to brief the council.
All right. Thank you and good afternoon. This is this afternoon's regular council meeting agenda. It is amended. I will start with your consent agenda. You have two resolutions for final consideration on your agenda. They're both confirmation resolutions. The first is our 2023-117 confirming the appointment of three new members to the South Hill Advisory Commission. And next is our 2023-118. This is confirming the appointment of two new members and the reappointment of two existing members to the Pierce County Flood Control Zone District Advisory Committee. Moving, let's see, you have no proclamations, recognitions or awards today. So we'll move right to section eight ordinances and you have two proposals here. The first is 2023-25 and this is authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $51 million in limited tax general obligation bonds. This is for the purchase and improvements to a new building and also for remodeling and renovation of the county city building. This received a de-pass recommendation at rules on July 17th. Next proposal is 2023-24 and this is repealing ordinances 2023-5S and 2023-14. This is related to petition filed with the Growth Management Hearings Board. This was forwarded without recommendation at CDC on July 17th. And there are a couple of amendments that Mr. Kruger has advised me of. Moving now to section nine resolutions, you have three proposals here. They're very similar to one another. All of them are authorizing the executive executed interlocal agreement relating to the distribution of Parks Second Re-Defunds. The first is our 2023-110. This is with the City of Gig Harbor and this received a de-pass at CDC on July 17th. The second is our 2023-111 and this is with the Peninsula Metropolitan Park District. This also received a de-pass at CDC on July 17th. And the third is our 2023-112S and this is with the Key Peninsula Metropolitan Park District. This one received a de-pass as substituted at CDC on July 17th. And those are your agenda items for the second meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Long. I'll note that we have a customer recruiter scheduled to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Land Acknowledgement today. And customer Hoover.
Thank you. No, if you'll have someone else, please.
Councilmember, so we just go down the line. So Councilmember Hitchens will turn to you next.
Okay.
I think I heard that proposal 2023-24 has amendments planned for it. Mr. Kruger?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I can see that Councilmember Morell is passing out. The First Amendment would be to the effective date of the proposal. The amendment would change the effective date to December 15th, 2023. And I would note that that day was chosen intentionally because that date is about a week after the Growth Management Hearings Board is scheduled to issue its final decision in order in the case that was appealed. So that would be the First Amendment. Questions? I'd be happy to take them.
Councilmember Morell.
Thank you. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. We're just setting a date in the future on this of September 15th, as Mr. Kruger said.
December 15th?
December. What did I say?
September.
December 15th because the Growth Management Hearing Board is set to final on the 6th. So it would be after that to find out if we aren't in a position to have to repeal anything or not. So anyway, that's that.
Questions about amendment one? Not seeing any. Mr. Kruger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Amendment number two would require the preparation of an equity note prior to the repeal of 2023-5S. And I would just note for the benefit of council, the lack of an equity note in this particular proposal was intentional. It was, it was discussed with the staff concerning whether or not it's appropriate to do an equity note due to the fact that there was no equity note prepared for the original legislation and some, and some other details. And so that was thought out by staff. Staff decided to forego the equity note for those reasons. This would reinsert the obligation. And so as you know, council has adopted an ordinance that created in council rules and procedures, an obligation to do an equity note. This amendment that Councilmember Morell is offering would add a new section to the ordinance obligating that equity note be completed prior to the effectiveness of the repeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there again. Thank you, Ms. Chair. I think that's self-explanatory that we need to take a global look at what we're doing here by removing the use of the RR zone for our shared housing and the impact that has on our nonprofit and other affordable housing developers. Because we are taking a sizable piece of property or land away from being able to use for our shared housing and affordable housing. We just need to be aware of what impact that will have. So, and that's why I requested the equity note.
Thank you, Councilmember. And questions for Councilmember Morell? Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Mr. Kruger, for briefing us on the amendments. Are there any other questions about today's council meeting agenda? Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just so it doesn't catch anybody off guard, I will be making a verbal motion to move the date from today to either August 8th or August 22nd to consider this resolution. Checked with staff, some of the staff are off next week. Some of the council members are gone next week. So the next available date would, to get the council as a whole to, to discuss this issue would be the 8th, preferably the 22nd. And that would then, because I know, I think on 15th, we have the end district. So that date is, is off the table. So if that is acceptable to continue it, then I won't continue with my verbal amendments of asking to postpone indefinitely. So I will make a verbal amendment to hear this on the 8th of the 22nd. If that fails, then I will make a verbal motion to repeat or to postpone indefinitely. If that fails, then I will continue with the amendments.
Thank you, Councilmember Morell, for the courtesy of. Thank you, Councilmember Morel, for the courtesy of understanding what motions you plan to bring forward today. We do appreciate that. Any other questions about today's council meeting agenda? I'm not seeing any. We're going to move to item three of external report out on external boards and commissions. Mr. Swanson, can we turn to you for any Pierce County Regional Council updates?
Yes, thank you, Chair Mello. The we'll start with the Pierce County Regional Council did meet last Thursday. They received one presentation and they had two action items, but we'll get to those. The Pierce Transit did present their five-year transit development plan. It's in draft form. The draft was described as technical changes and that the let me make sure I get the timeline for all of you on that. The and as you know, Chair Mello and Councilmember Campbell serve on that board. So if anybody, if anybody does want a copy of the draft report, we can get that distributed to them. If you have any comments on it, the public comment period closed July 10. But again, we do have the chair and Councilmember Campbell that do serve on that board. Final adoption is scheduled for August 14 to be presented to WASD by September 1. So if anybody would like that draft plan, let me know. We'll get that distributed to you. Again, PCRC did take action on the Transportation Coordinated Committee recommendations on the Rural Towns and Center and Corridors Program. They recommended three, they received three applications and recommended all of those three applications to be advanced on to the next stage of the regional competition. Those three projects are the City of Orient's pedestrian and bike trail relocation project, City of Body Lakes Veterans Memorial Drive, Angeline Road Intersection Project, and then Pierce County's Lackey Road, Jackson Lake Road, Key Peninsula Highway Roundabout Project. So those three rural projects are getting advanced to the regional level of the competition for that for the Rural Towns and Centers and Corridors funding. The second agenda item that actually got continued to their to their September meeting, the the county-wide funding process summaries had a working group that's been chaired by Councilmember Figaroa out of University Place, and I was Councilmember Waiting for Pualap has been the co-chair of that. They did not meet and did not have a recommendation report as anticipated, but that will be forwarded on to the September meeting where action is anticipated on those potential changes. Onto the Puget Sound Regional Council. There there haven't been any committee meetings since last updated by Mr. Taylor. There is a meeting of the Operations Committee that is coming up on the 27th. So that would be August. Yeah, that's this week. That's two days from now. We're at the end of July already. They do have action items on the agenda that are procedural, mainly approving the maybe just approving contracts, things like that. They do have an information item coming up of note that is the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grants Program. That presentation will be given to that committee at that meeting in two days. If council members would like, we can get a copy of that, and listen, we'll get that distributed to you also. Those are for those two organizations.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Any questions for Mr. Swanson about those items before we ask for other boards and commissions updates? Customer Denson?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Swanson, at the PCRC meeting, the Pierce Transit representative talked a little bit about some unique outreach programs that are going to be happening in Gig Harbor this summer, looking at the service they provide and and all of that. I meant to follow up with him. Would you mind reaching out and having him get in touch with with me? Because I want to make sure we I can do what I can to help market that outreach and make sure everyone is aware of it. Thank you.
I will call Ryan this afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Do other members have any other external boards and commission updates? Customer Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. So I just came back from the National Association of Counties, and I'm on the Human Services Education Committee. So sort of a boards and commission. Don't know where this fits, but just wanted to acknowledge that Pierce County once again was recognized in the Achievement Awards Section specifically for the Small Business Incubator, the Pierce County Business Accelerator. You did not win Best in Show. There was a little disappointment, but there's some really great programs going on across the country. So but we were in there. I'm sending a copy of this to Director Capastani as well, but just wanted to acknowledge the work of that group and and the fact that they've got some staff together to apply. And it was a great conference, learned tons. I'll be sending out my regular little update request to staff about, hey, here's an idea that I organized, and but I just haven't gotten to that point yet. So I'm glad to be back. It was a little warm while I was down there.
Thank you for representing us at the National Association of Counties, and I do see Director Economic Development Director Capastani as an attendee of the the Zoom meeting here during study session. So congratulations, Director, to you and your very hardworking staff for the many accolades and recognition the program is receiving. It's well deserved. Any other updates from external boards and commissions by other members? Not seeing any. Thank you for that. Item number four, Chair's topics. There's one item here that I prepared for discussion. And that is about the Peta Sound Taxpayer Accountability Act funds. This body is very much aware that we have asked our Birth to 25 Advisory Board to make recommendations to the department, the the Human Services Department, about the best use of these funds in line with a strategy that the Birth to 25 Advisory Board led. And so these are competitive resources. A request for proposals goes out to the community within the confines of the strategy that the Birth to 25 Advisory Board developed for the best use of the funds. The B to 25 Advisory Board then reviews those proposals, ranks them according to the criteria set, and then makes recommendations to the department and the executive, and then on to the county council who has the final who who is the final authorizer of the recommendations for the Birth to 25 Advisory Board. There's two points to this letter. The the first point of the letter in my mind is to give some direction to the department and the B to 25 Board about this question of, okay, the the dollars are collected through those who pay taxes through the sound through Sound Transit system, through Sound Transit 3 system, and there are a lot of taxes. They are the people who pay car tab fees, property taxes, and sales taxes within the Sound Transit 3 taxing district. It's not it's not a small amount. And so there's there's this pretty significant policy question of if you if you're a service provider outside of the taxing district, should you be able to apply? And so thi- this letter, the the second to the last paragraph addresses that that question. This letter indicates that it is the desire of the county council that we allow folks outside of the taxing district to apply. So they're not they're not banned from applying. You can still apply if your if your project or program lies without outside of the Sound Transit taxing district. However, we request that they create a one of the criteria during scoring is do you do you primarily serve individuals within the taxing district? If you do, you get more points during the competition. If you don't, you can still compete, but you don't get points for that geography criteria section. So you can read the language for yourself, but that it's it's in that second to the last paragraph that starts with the word additionally. So that that's what that paragraph strives to do is give that direction about about that. Again, still allowing any program that fits the the purpose of these funds to apply, doesn't restrict anyone from applying, but it does give preference to to those programs and services for those who are paying this tax. The second purpose of this letter is to convey council's priorities about the use of the funds. It is not meant to, and and I think the letter makes it clear, it is not the sole, these aren't the sole budget priorities for this. But again, I I took these priorities from our recently adopted Budget Priorities Resolution, which we spent a lot of time developing together. And there were a couple of things that really rose out of that that fit nicely in the pasta funds. One is the the paid youth internship program, the higher Pierce County program that our Economic Development Department and Workforce Central has led for us with American Rescue Plan Act dollars. I heard from many, many members across this dais how important that priority was and that we want to figure out how to resource that paid internship program for young people into the future, even after we don't have the ARPA dollars to invest anymore. So it's it states that priority. It also states the priority of the Summer Teen Late Nights Program, which this council got really excited about in a supplemental budget recently. This is one of our strategies to help young people stay out of trouble and be productive and have fun things to do this summer. And another another program that is very much eligible for these dollars. So it states that along with this council's childcare priorities, this council has stated repeatedly that we know how important childcare is for workforce development and helping everyone re-enter the workforce and stay engaged in the workforce. So that's that's the summary and the background of the letter and the purpose of the letter. The as a reminder, the the RFP is going out very soon. And this is meant to inform the RFP and the early deliberations and not 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 do the reverse. So I I think it's really important that we we communicate early with the Birth to 25 Advisory Board as opposed to waiting to the end of the process when it comes up here, and then we we reinsert things and all that. That that may happen. But to the extent we can communicate with the Birth to 25 Advisory Board early, I think it it better informs a more thought-out process. So that that's why the that's why the letter. And you can certainly read it for yourself. Looking for concurrence to send the letter, but also looking for any suggestions for any edits as well, of course. Customer Redenson?
Thank you, Chair. I really like this idea, and in fact, I think we should do this prior to RFPs for for all of the the different grant programs that we have citizens groups weighing in on behavioral health and homelessness and and things like that. I think it just helps that we're communicating very clearly what our priorities are, especially as they're developing the RFP and then later as they're analyzing programs. So one of the things that I like, and I don't know, I haven't looked in detail at this RFP in the past, so maybe this is already done. But with Conservation Futures in the RFP, they show the points. They say, you know, you get how many points for having over forty forty acres in your project, or you have this many points for being contiguous with other open space, and this many points for being in urban growth area. And it just goes on and on. Your matching funds give you points. So then the applicants can assess, A, is it worth my time applying? You know, am I going to get a certain number of points? And they may, if they do a variety of projects, they may look at those points and say, you know, this project I'm doing is not going to be super competitive, but this one really touches on childcare, for example, or teen activities. So I'm going to apply under for that project. So I think it really, really our nonprofit organizations or or anyone able to apply for these. And it's also making sure that we're getting the projects that support our priorities. So I'm hoping that, and maybe this is what you're you're conveying in this letter, that the RFP includes really clearly what the categories are. Are you providing childcare? Are you providing, you know, teen activities? Are you with, like you said, within the the Sound Transit District? So I think that'll be really, really helpful in making sure that that we're getting the projects we want and that the nonprofits are not wasting their time. If if their projects aren't going to score well, they might as well look look elsewhere for funding. And again, I'm hoping that we do something similar for all of our grant programs. I think this was really, really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Customer Redenson. I'm looking to see if Ms. Merrick is on the line. She might not be in the office today to see if she knows the answer to this question. Are applicants able to self-score themselves? Are they able to see the criteria they're scored against? If I see Ms. Merrick raising her hand as an attendee, and I also see Carol Menza from the Pierce County Human Services Department, I suppose. Ms. Merrick, can we start with you?
Carol would have the best hands.
I just moved over to panelists.
Thank you. Both of them are. So we'll invite both the department staff and council staff to respond.
Chair Mello, I will just respond. From the applications I've seen with the RFPs, there are the categories that show the points that will be available. So there's a scoring sheet that I've seen. I think this was for the supplemental pasta funds where they did show how many points were available for each category. I can't speak to all of the RFPs, though. Carol may be able to speak to that for you.
Ms. Menza?
My, I was actually, I can only speak for the pasta for that RFP, but I can also take the information back to Director Moss. And I'm sure that she'll be open to the, you know, having the scoring for all of the RFPs.
Thank you. Are you able to ask, answer the question now with the pasta funds, are applicants able to see very clearly how they earn points and able to self-score themselves?
So this is timely because I'm in the process of developing the RFP, so I will make sure that that's the case.
Awesome.
Thank you, Ms. Menza. Appreciate you being available to hear this discussion and answer our questions in real time. Anything else, Customer Redenson, at this time?
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that, those thoughts. Customer Hoover?
Thank you, Chair. I'm just wanted to go back to the the premise that unincorporated areas that don't pay the transit tax are not as embraced. I guess maybe that's not perhaps the right word. But the folks that are in the the business desert area, I guess I might want to call it, don't have the opportunity to do the shopping there, so they have to go into the transit area. So they're purchasing cars and paying transit tax inside the the benefited areas. They're buying retail, which has sales tax on that. So I would ask that that be more e- even though they're not in the district of taxing for it, they pay it, that they'd not be penalized in in the point scoring. When I look at the programs you're doing, the after-school and whatnot, sure, the folks down there could go into town and and benefit from that. But there's also organizations like EYSA that it's self-funded nonprofit, and they do a lot with the kids and the sports and learning those things. Perhaps dollars could be towards something like that. I I think that's a little bit too narrow on use of such a large fund that should also go out to the other areas.
Thank you, Customer Hoover. I I think that's why we strive, we strive to draft it the way that this is drafted with that very much in mind, that sometimes someone does shop and it pays the sales tax portion, but they if they live outside this the taxing district, they're not paying the property taxes every year, and their their cars are very likely not registered in the taxing district. It's registered where they live, and so they're not paying the car tabs, which are with there's a big difference. There's a there's a big financial difference between those in the taxing district and those not in the taxing district. So to acknowledge that some people shop in the taxing district, that's why not not having this like bright line restriction on can you apply, can you not apply was is the compromise here, but saying you should, if you're paying all the taxes, you should primarily benefit.
But we're also looking at youth, and it isn't youth that's spending the money, but they're the ones that are either suffering or benefiting, or I shouldn't say suffering, but being gypped.
It's a difficult, difficult balance to strike you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? Well, look, I'll hold on to this until I think Thursday and see if members have any other thoughts as you ponder this. And I'll strive to get this out by end of day Thursday. So if members have further thoughts, we can continue to refine it, and I'll work with our staff to get the final letter out on Thursday. And I believe Consumer Kitchen is our informal, maybe formal liaison?
Informal.
Informal liaison to the Birth to 25 Advisory Group. Informal liaison to the Birth of 25 Advisory Group. So we'll be able to further expound on what our intent is. With the communication, customer kitchen.
And that was actually a good segue. That was my question. So in your, I think your email, when you sent out the draft, you'd said somebody would be there. And I was wondering if you were going to be there as chair or if I was bringing this letter. On on behalf of the council and happy to do it because I was going to be there anyways, but I started to ask, put you on the spot, see if you were going to. Spend a few minutes with Birth of 25 on a Monday next week.
Was hoping you would.
Got it. Thanks.
Connected the dots.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Well, if again, if members have any further input, please get it to me. Before end of day Thursday so that we can release the letter. And and I, we we have been asked by both the department and the Birth of 25 Advisory Group for this kind of communication. They're very, they're very much welcoming this kind of communication so they can truly understand what. Better understand this policy issue related to the regional transit. Area and and what council's priorities are. They're they're sincerely interested in what our, what our priorities are. Moving on to other business proclamation review, there is a Farmers Market Week proclamation brought forward by Councilmember Denson. That is in the packet. Please work with either customer Denson as the sponsor or with our communications team. For any other refinements to that proclamation. Are there any other items of business by members? Customer morale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to give staff the heads up, I will be quizzing you on. 2023 dash 110 again, basically along the same lines that I did in committee pertaining to the REIT. Taking county REIT money and giving it to a city that doesn't pay REIT tax. And I may ask. The finance also to engage in that conversation. I just think it's. A bad precedence to set. And I understand how it came about. But I I think that doesn't justify. Putting the funds into that particular issue. So I just want to make sure I give everyone the heads up and Mr. Kruger will be. Asking you the questions along with maybe finance also to see if we have a history of doing that. The legalities of doing that. So thank you.
Thank you for making sure staff is prepared, Councilor Ralph, and we'll make sure the Executive's Office and Mr. Kruger. Have department staff available to make sure they're prepared to answer Councilor Morel and other members' questions today. Any other business by other members? Not seeing any Ms. Long, any other business for council and study session?
Not from staff. Thank you.
Seeing no other business before the Pierce County Council and Tuesday study session, we are adjourned.